Okay, everybody, thank you so much for being here. I know it's a little late, but little things happen and we're just gonna continue. We're gonna start the first order of business is our chair, unfortunately won't be here, and our vice chair also cannot assist today. So our first order of business will be choosing a chair just for this meeting to run it. I will be, any nominations that can be on the table, please?
Nominate John Guzman.
I second for to run this meeting.
I as well.
Awesome, so Jonathan into being chair just for this meeting until further notice. Alright, we're gonna start by core order to salute the flag, please rise for the pleasure of region. Thank you. Our next order of business will be public comments, please remember you have two minutes of limit. Our first participant will be Molly.
Myun Molly, 53 Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. Citizens of this proud city welcome you as our true representative or our citizen. We demand of you work with Honorable Superintendent Cynthia Paris to create the best public school for our children. Honorable Superintendent Cynthia Paris, one of the best superintendent in the history of Lawrence Public School, implementation of the policy of hundred days just listening. She has listened to our public, to our voice, voice of our community and the school staff. You must encourage all the principals and the school staff from District A to District F to participate in all superintendent and the meetings such as these, and the central office meeting. It is shameful that in our public schools, the schools such as Robert Frost Elementary Schools, employees and the teachers, they are so uninformed that they don't know even the name of the superintendent of our public school. Participation starts from our public school employees, teachers, and principals, come to the central office meeting and meetings such as these. In a superintendent meeting, they will learn. Then we can ask our parent and citizen to be active partner. Let's unite to make our public education the best public school. We demand of you support Lawrence Teachers Union in the important year of the contract. While Laurentian crying and mourning the sudden death of our beloved DPW employees, we are united to say Lawrence always is strong, Lawrence always unite. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next participant will be Marionella Rivera.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Marionella Rivera. I am a former school committee member, and I'm the current table coordinator for the Greater Lawrence Education Justice Alliance. I'd like to start by formally congratulating and welcome y'all to the school committee. I am so thankful that we have leaders who are willing to be champions for the students, the parents, and the teachers that I work with closely in the community, so thank you. I'd like to start by saying that I'm really disappointed that the Student Opportunity Act didn't make it to tonight's agenda. It was a historic act that was passed in November, and it's required by law that districts formulate a plan in conjunction with community stakeholders, and it's required that we submit a plan for the funding by April 1st to DESI. School committees have already met throughout the Commonwealth, they've begun their discussions, and school committees, to be honest with you, are meeting way more frequently than our current school committee is. There are school committees that are meeting every two weeks, and they're doing an effective job at closing the achievement gap. So I think it's beyond apparent at this point that if we wait to the next meeting in March to begin having these discussions with our elected leaders on the Student Opportunity Act, that it'll be too late. So I honestly think that our school committee meetings should be more frequent at this point, but fortunately, the members of the Greater Lawrence Education Justice Alliance will be hosting our own forum to educate our community about the Student Opportunity Act and formulating a community drafted plan that we will be proposing to our school committee members at LAE and the school district. This event will be held on February 24th at the Lawrence Public Library from 6:00 to 8:00, so all are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next participant will be Tom Myers.
Thanks, Jonathan. And Tom Myers, and my address is 550 Haverhill Street, and I just have a couple remarks here, and the first one is to congratulate all of you on your election to the school committee. And just to start with, why do you have legitimacy to sit and make policy and laws? Why does anybody of government at the local, state, or national level have that power? And it's because of the electoral process. And I think, you know, Abraham Lincoln summarizes best when he spoke at the Gettysburg Battle Site for his address, and he indicated that we are a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. And to that end, you have been elected to serve, yet you are unable to do so because the Department of Education has vested the power to govern the district in the hands of an unelected body, the receivership board. Under the structure, the Department of Education, under this structure, the Department of Education will continue to treat the citizens of Lawrence as a colonized people who are unable to assume control by electing our own officials. And this is an insult not only to you, but it is to every citizen in the city. And to me, this is the most odious part of the nefarious state control of the Lawrence schools. It takes away the democratic prerogative. And the ultimate solution to this is for you all to develop a transition plan yourself, a transition plan which will include the interaction with the receivership board in joint decision-making for a period of time before you assume full control. I wrote myself a transition plan just so people have something to critique.
Two minutes.
You all now have copies of that. I asked you to read it, deliberate on it, and to move forward. If you stay in the position you're at now, you have the power of an elementary school student government, no power whatsoever. You didn't run for election for that reason. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Our next will be, participant will be Mike Bresna, Bresna?
Bresnahan.
Bresnahan.
Hello, Mike Bresnahan, 144 Berkeley Street, Lawrence, Mass. I was a teacher in a Cambridge public school system for about 17 years, I'm retired from full-time teaching. Now I'm a math parrot at the Gommet Middle School. I love our kids. I know what good teaching is because I practice it. But let's be real here, there's a song "All Along the Watchtower" by Bob Dylan. It says, "It's time to stop speaking falsely now, the hour is getting late." Our kids are suffering. Many of our kids suffer trauma. They suffer the, suffer the trauma of poverty and racism. Many suffer the trauma of coming from some country that has been colonized. They suffer the trauma of having a system and a president that is openly anti-immigrant, openly a racist, so that's part of it. But I've noticed, you know what I mean, and also, we have a system of testing that is toxic. From day one, the kids come in and they're tested. They have the A-Net test, they have the access test, they have the MCAS test, the social, emotional part, which is key, because if we're gonna change this world, we're gonna have to build better people. We're gonna have to have people that look out, wanna change the world, and see themselves as a community. This is not happening in our schools, and I don't blame, I don't blame the administrators, I don't blame the teachers who have to spend an inordinate amount of their time tracking kids' growth. We have kids coming every day from different countries, maybe from Puerto Rico that has suffered through Katrina, maybe refugees that are coming, okay? They come to our schools, they're expected to learn math, and they're trying to, they don't understand English, and they're expected to learn it?
Two minutes.
This is an outrage, okay? We need to address this, we need to take care of our children, we need more mental health support, we need more support on every level, we need more teachers of, Latino teachers. Now, they say that they've upped it. The diversity in the system is the paraprofessionals. We have maybe one or two teachers, alright, that are Latino at our school. So as far as making advances in diversity, it's a sham. Let's be honest here. And we have many talented paraprofessionals, Latino, that could use support. We should be recruiting them and supporting them. So let's get real here, okay? We don't need more of this toxic culture of testing that disengages kids because they throw worksheets at them every day.
Thank you, Mike. Our next participant will be Cassie Infante, please.
Good evening, colleagues and community members. It's an honor to be here as the elected school committee representative for District A. And in commencing our collective work within our community, I wanted to bring attention and awareness to two important things. I'm grateful for Dr. Marionella Rivera, I want to certainly echo her sentiments in mentioning the very important Student Opportunity Act. That is bringing over $150 million to the Lawrence Public School System, and we truly have a great responsibility to ensure that the funds are allocated in methods that serve our students first. With the April 1st deadline for budgeting plans approaching, I urge the receivership board to, and our school committee, to really consider ways we can make this process more accessible and approachable for all stakeholders who have a vested interest in this process. So that can include students and parents who may not be already represented in our feedback channels. Second, as an opportunity to inform our work ahead, particularly with the Student Opportunity Act, I invite all stakeholders to learn more and engage with Glazia, as Dr. Rivera mentioned. A sitting chapter of the Massachusetts Education Justice Alliance, Glazia has been active in community organizing and civic education in Lawrence since 2016. Glazia believes that universal free public education is the foundation of our democracy, and its methods are rooted in social justice practices such as dismantling high-stakes testing. For example, also the restorative justice practices, which I do commend our school system and Superintendent Paris for undertaking within LPS. I invite all of you to attend our educational forum in which we will discuss our educational priorities and the Student Opportunity Act on Monday, February 24th. You are welcome to follow Glazia on Facebook for more information. Thank you.
Our next participant will be Joshua Alba.
I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself very briefly, since there are all kinds of misunderstandings going around about my work, but I wanted to do that by sharing my perspective and approach to my role as school committee member, and by sharing a strong concern that I have on some recent legislation and our role carrying out that work. And congrats to all of us, and thank you all for coming. Cordiality, right? I'm a first-generation Dominican-American and a lifelong resident of the city of Lawrence. I've been civically engaged for some time now on various issues affecting our Latina Oekis community, and in that work of mobilizing, organizing, winning and losing campaigns, I've learned that too many in our city don't know how to advocate for ourselves and the issues, or how to mount just campaigns. This being the situation, and having a lack of insight into the history and efficacy of social movements, including our own bread and roses and labor history in Lawrence, one can see that, one can see how many in the community would see the work of protesting direct action and asking strong questions as something other than helpful. But rest assured, just to let everybody know, my interests lie in a radical transformation and empowerment of Lawrence residents, especially our students, to resist oppression in whatever form, to think critically and create new and cooperative ways of living. To that point, the Student Opportunity Act has passed, as you've heard from some other folks, and is set to bring over $150 million to Lawrence. Will Lawrence residents and our duly-elected school committee members get a say into how that desperately needed money will be spent? Two of my colleagues, Cassandra and John and myself, sent our chair a request to place this very important topic on the agenda for tonight's meeting, with plenty of time for it to be added before the 48-hour notification limit hit for putting our agenda publicly, oh, in the public, rather. And we didn't receive a response. I'm willing to grant our chair that this was an oversight, but we've been paying attention for the last five years.
Two minutes.
And that's generous courtesy.
Thank you, Joshua.
So I just wanna say for the last thing, this is a great opportunity for us to work together, as to call a special meeting for the school committee and the LAE to work together in the next few weeks to begin this discussion on how we're gonna spend half of our school's annual budget that's coming in.
Thank you, Joshua. Our next participant will be Eto Cruz. Great, thank you, everybody that stood up and share their part and their piece that makes everybody, you were a community and we should all work together, and if there's something that you wish you'd say you always are welcome to. Our, our next agenda will be, new business will be the superintendent report. Come on, thank you to you.
Yeah, thank you. So in addition, I'd like to highlight a few things that are exciting in our district this week as we end the week. We, the students at the high school are performing in Jesus Christ Superstar, you can see them in their performance tonight, they're doing rehearsals between 6:00 and 8:00 tomorrow, as well as 6:00 o'clock, and then on Saturday as well. So I invite you to come, they're impressive actors and actresses. Additionally, the high school is going to be having a celebration of accreditation, I'm gonna report in a moment about that process. And lastly, we have educators this weekend who are gonna continue to engage in restorative justice practices. So I'll continue with the high school update, and so what you'll hear tonight is again the NEAS accreditation, school culture and climate update, and then on the headmaster We went through a two-year process to get accreditation, and here are some of the commendations that we received from the team. I'll add that this is a very extensive and very rigorous process that staff members and students and families had to go through for two years, so this is a point of pride for us. What they said was is that the presence of challenging and observable learning expectations were present. I won't read through all of this, I'll sort of just highlight some of them. The commitment to the dual enrollment, of course, we have early college for our students and the upper grades. And then highly effective use of assessments, which was being spoken about. We do think that benchmarking our students' progress is one way for our teachers to know how to design instruction for our students. The other thing that they had was, of course, recommendations.
Sorry, Superintendent, may I ask a question real quick on that slide?
Yes, so if you want to go slide by slide, I can do that, but it's best for you to hear the whole report, because some of the questions will be answered, so it's up to you.
Keep on.
So recommendations included professional development for teachers to optimize extended instruction. Our campus is divided by schools within schools, and so sometimes that brings on challenges as to how to bring coherence to the instruction, we acknowledge that. They also recommended that we develop a plan to unify faculty across the academies, again, that's part of the alignment of the curriculum. And then they also recommended that we develop criteria for measuring and monitoring and collecting the student progress, although we have specific benchmarks across, they're not also aligned across the grades. This is the celebration that will happen tomorrow, again, it's between 3:00 and 4:00, and we invite you all to join us if, if you're available. I think we sent out individual invitations to members of this committee. So I will stop here for the recommendations and the commendations to make sure that we get some of your questions asked, so if there are any questions on commendations or recommendations, I'll take those.
I was actually hoping that Marisol?
Uh huh.
Yes, I remember she actually, I do wanna thank, everything, I know it is a little hard and challenging to run a system as Lawrence High, but I do wish to like make, what is the sense of profound belonging that students associate with the school as a caring home? How many programs are established right now at Lawrence High? I would like to know that, I would like to know how many clubs are actually active? As an alum, I, there's certain things, you know, that school, math, science, the normal curriculum, I believe, doesn't make it home. I think the more the belonging and the connection with teachers and administration, other than sports, makes it a belonging home. And I think that's something that I would like to know, to see how many programs are we trying to enter to help to make our kids to see it.
Yeah, I'm happy to bring you back to that information, I don't have the number and names of clubs or programs, but I agree with you that a sense of belonging is more about relationship building and connecting with students.
Thank you, Superintendent Paris. I do have one question in regards to the second bullet point on the commendation of students feel a sense of belonging and they associate school as a place for a caring home. Could you share just a few more details on where that statement comes from? Is it, was it a sample size of students, how many students? I'm just wondering if you could shed light maybe on any data points to support that statement.
So part of the process was to have focus groups with students and families, and questions that were asked of those focus groups, I wasn't privy to, but what we saw in the detailed report is that students feel like they have an adult, at least one adult in the building that knows them, knows them to the detail that they feel like if there was something to disclose, it was, there was something to highlight, they could go to that one adult. I think we feel very proud of that, I think in a campus as large as ours, that matters, that there's a one adult that knows each child.
Thank you.
So I'll move on to the school culture and climate, and here are, this is more of an update, this is moving on to what's currently happening at the campus. What I'll highlight here is that we've done quite a bit of work in, since the fall, to address concerns of safety, to address concerns of school culture and climate, and so these are the steps that we have taken, to include partnering with DESI to support students who are disabilities, English learners, and to assure appropriate needs have met in their alternative educations and the programs that we have. These programs include campus, programs on the campus, programs that are in this building, and programs outside of this building and the campus. I'll also highlight that we've seen a significant decrease in physical articulations between students. At the beginning of the school year, we saw a peak, we attribute that to sort of onboarding of new students and new administrators and teachers, so we had sort of growing pains in the beginning. We smoothed those out with a lot of training, with a lot of support and discussions with the teachers and the students. And then lastly, we've reallocated funds for long-term subs and guidance council positions this year, because we also see an increase in mental health needs for our students, and we're gonna continue to think about other resources that we can offer our students as they're growing, as the needs grow on the campus. We also incorporated lockdown and safety learnings from surveys and small group and also large group discussions with the staff, including teachers. And I'll highlight here that we continue to collaborate around campus safety following incidents. We also have each academy reviewing the updated crisis camp, crisis plans and safety protocols, and then this information was turnkey by the teachers to the students. And then we did a safety drill, that one actually just happened this month already, so it's every month through the end of the school year, so there's consistency with what students and teachers can expect when we have emergencies. And lastly, every staff member received a brief anonymous safety and mid-year assessment, and then what you'll see is that we'll update that in March and the spring, and then later again in June.
I'd like to ask, what are we doing to make the teacher feel at home in their classroom? Are we supporting the teachers 100%? Are we giving the teachers some authority over their classroom? Is any provision in this project for that?
So each academy is autonomous in terms of curriculums, it's part of the recommendations that the NEAS team made. It's sort of good that teachers have autonomy in what they teach, and then the challenge is bringing coherence across the grades. So we love that, and so do the teachers, that they get autonomy in terms of how they teach to the standards, and the challenge is when you're moving through the grades, it makes it problematic for the kids to see the coherence, which you saw in one of the recommendations from the NEAS team. So your answer is to the, your, your, the question, the answer to your question is, yes, the teachers have autonomy and they can do that freely. We support them by giving them professional development, we support that by doing learning walks in their respective academies, and we support that by then coming together and doing big debriefs across the campus.
When they have problem with students, do the administration, do they support the teaching staff? Or will lean more to the student, what the student say, or what the teacher says? Or we try to accommodate both of them in a way that be adequate, for the student first, and then that the teacher feel comfortable teaching?
Yeah, I think that each individual incident or case is very different. There are many instances where, when investigations are being held, we learned that teachers were at fault, we also learn when kids are at fault. So there isn't one particular protocol that we follow, but we are committed to ensuring that both sides are being heard, that we maintain restorative justice practices, and that we also follow discipline code book. So it's, it's very varied, depending on what's happened.
Do you follow the protocol? I bet the school, the different schools, and then it's go to you, or you oversee everything?
I do not oversee anything on the campus, so the principals, the six principals, assistant headmaster, and the assistant superintendent.
Thanks.
I have a point there, actually, thank you. I just want, because I know like one of the recommendations that they said is that they want an alignment to happen across the school, and it's that, I guess if we got re-credit it, I guess in some way it's working, but it said working in the physical aspect of what, how the campus got built. It got built, you know, for admission, a vision back then, and each academy had a path for kids. And I feel that when, actually, Marisol actually said, Ms. Sheets, she actually explained that they want to ensure that kids aren't having to relearn procedures and behavioral expectations, and I feel like swishing it up on them is actually doing that, because they were ready, it happened once and then it happened again, and they had to reevaluate themselves to learn new procedures and expectations. And I feel like the academies brought an actual belonging to each kid. The same processes that were hap, that are happening on the Abbott Academy, it was similar, not quite the same, but similar, where kids applied to be to the schools, you know, they, they wanted to go to the math, science, and biology high school because they concentrated on that. You know, they, they wanted to go to the math, science, and biology high school because they concentrated on that, you know? And as an alum from that academy, it's what my degree is. And biology is in science because I had teachers that were hired. The principals had a background on certain things that they wanted to make sure that their academies, their schools, because on another day, we were just academy, but it was still Elie Chaz. And I feel like the, the whole unifying the school came from being Elie Chaz. But taking away the academies, I think it was, it's lacking a path of growth and focus of, you know, profession. I feel like the kids, especially now, to the kids that are divided now in nine, 10, 11, and 12, do the nine grade students mingle or take classes with the 11 grade students? Do they take any classes together?
Well, what I can say is that we are the recipients of the Barr Foundation grant, which is giving us an opportunity to reimagine what the portrait of a graduate at Lawrence High is. I think that they will be leaning towards pathways similar to your experience. And I think it belongs to students right now and teachers to redesign and reimagine that. So we're gonna be engaging in a process where we collect lots of feedback and learnings similar to yours to reimagine the portrait of Lawrence High School. What we do know is that what's happened on the campus for the past five years is not quite working. So students are learning, students are engaged, but we need to accelerate student learning. And so that's what we're hoping to reimagine that, and we're gonna engage in a process to do that.
So if we, if we were thinking of just how they were, that each school should be having like the same curriculum, that the same classes should be offered within each academy, wouldn't that have been a better process of taking care of this? Being able to offer the same type curriculum in each academy, plus those type of curriculums and classes that make a profound idea of those kids that are there. Because the PFA, like the performing arts kids, you know, they went there because they love theater and they love dancing. And in my understanding, there was never a time where if a student wanted to do theater, it was denied.
Yeah, again, all of that is possible, and I think we're gonna leave it up to students and faculty to redesign that right now. Because what is currently, how it's currently designed is not meeting their needs. So it is possible that the way you're envisioning now and you're mentioning it, it's the right way. I don't know that. I think we're gonna have to listen to kids and the faculty more and redesign the high school. So I'm gonna trust that process, and that's gonna happen in the next year and a half, and I'm happy to report back, so.
And definitely, thank you for that. We definitely want you to report to us. It brings, love the idea of the students being involved in this. But a high percentage of our faculty don't represent our students, so.
But, but I do trust them because they do care about our students. They are, this is their area of expertise, and I trust that. I think they also wanna be successful. Whether they look like our kids or not, it's our responsibility to support them. It's our responsibility to trust that they care about them, and I, and I believe that. I believe that they care about our kids.
We need to trust, I, I, I will believe that when, hope that our retention of teachers stay large. I think when that is not increasing, it's just, I don't know, it's a way of using our system in order to get experience and move forward. That, that's, that's where it lacks that of hope or trust when we see that happening. Thank you.
I have a question, if I may. Thank you for putting together the presentation. In regards to the drills, I know at the Public Safety Forum and the, um, the event that happened a few months ago, there was a clamor for, for increased public safety and some things, safety measurements to be put in place. I'm wondering, what was, what was happening before that event? And what's happening, well, you just told us what's happening now here. But then are, you mentioned socio-emotional data or the health of the students. Is there any socio-emotional data looking at how students were doing before the drills and after? Because it seems like it's a lot, and I'm concerned about there being so much drills, and like we live in that trauma, you know? Is there anything to show how they're doing before the increase in drills before the event and then after, like now?
No, I'm not quite sure how we would measure how they're doing. I mean, I suppose we can ask broad questions, how do you feel in terms of safety? When I meet with affinity groups, they still have conversations with me pretty candidly about that. But it's not specific to drills.
Okay.
Yeah.
They, so then, the, do we have socio-emotional data?
I'm not, I'm not clear about your question when you say social emotional data.
Right, oh, okay. So, no, I, I heard you say it before. In, um, in the part where we're talking about long-term substitute guidance counselor positions and increasing positions for council social workers, BCBAs.
So that's all mental health for us and behavioral health. And so examples of that include, there, there are many examples, but I can give you one that doesn't disclose much in terms of privacy. You know, we have students who have experienced a number of challenges. It's either between student to student. It could be something that they experienced from their home environment. It could be something that they experienced in their community. And so they aren't able to focus at school for whatever reason, and they'll request to meet with a guidance counselor or one of the social workers. So that means that we're increasing the number of supports that when a student says disclosures to a trusted adult in the building, "I'm not feeling well, here's what happened," that they can have access to that adult right away.
Okay, that was helpful. Thank you.
I do have a question just in regards to school culture and climate. I'm wondering with references to a number of parents expressing concern about the communication channels at the Safety Forum on November 6th. I'm wondering Superintendent Paris, if you can just share maybe ways in which we are thinking about improving parent communications, perhaps in our processes or policies, particularly when it comes to crises or emergencies?
Yeah, so one of the things that teachers, one great idea that the teachers had was the ability, one of the challenges we face in a crisis is how you communicate quickly with the correct information. And so it's nearly impossible for us to do that without misinformation going out because of, you know, devices. So our responsibility is to ensure that there is timely and accurate information. So one idea that the parents had is that we use, there's a few apps that the teachers use for a centrally located person to send quick information to the families. The challenge we have there is like how much information do you send? Because in the middle of a crisis, you also have to protect other people getting that information. So if we say to parents, "All the kids are in the pack." The same people we're trying to keep the kids from the pack also have the information. See the problem? So they have ideas. We don't disclose those because then they become public and that affects our safety plan. But it's internal communication via apps that the teachers and administrators can use and then push out to family members, including staff members, because they're also worried. So it's both the families and staff members, significant others, and family members. But to disclose, it puts us in the predicament of not being able to keep staff and kids safe, the details of the safety plan, so we can be broad about it in public. That's the challenge we have. So I'll continue with my presentation and entertain questions along the way. This is the update about the headmaster search. We have, we posted the position in December. The selection advisory committee, which we call the SAC, has been assembled. They've already interviewed initial round of candidates. They did that this week. The committee includes 18 stakeholders. There's principals, teachers, community partner, there's a clerk, the assistant superintendent, the assistant headmaster, and parents in that committee. They all designed questions that were very thoughtful, and they winnowed down the pool of candidates. Right now, we have had additional candidates applied to the position, so we're gonna be interviewing additional candidates next week. And then we go into the semifinalist rounds. And that means that candidates are going to come before six other focus groups. They're gonna go in front of students, parents, administrators, teachers, central office administrators, and answer questions of all those stakeholder groups. The process concludes with a finalist round. That finalist round has candidates going through a series of scenarios, including learning walks. We wanna make sure that the person is also an instructional leader before we do due diligence with reference checks, make offer, and then have the staff meet finalist before we appoint a finalist, hopefully in March. Oops, I lost it. And so that concludes the update of the high school. If there are any additional questions?
Yeah, I have a point. You think somebody can be appointed from, through the second search? You said it's the semifinalist round. You think somebody from the school committee can be appointed into that?
Elected officials are not appointed to the school search. Your colleagues on the Lawrence Alliance for Education also asked that. This is under the purview of LPS administration, and the stakeholder groups do include a good representation of the community, which include parents, teachers, and students. You are welcome to come to the finalist round where all stakeholders in the community can join in the Q and A of the finalist. That's a good place for community members to join, but they don't get appointed to the selection advisory committee.
Okay, so there will be like a public information for them to know where, where it's gonna happen to ask those questions? Or is this gonna be like us for us to go, like the school committee members just to go in? And if you have any questions to ask them? Or is it open to the public to ask questions that they, like parents?
It's open to stakeholders of the, of the Lawrence High School. That includes you all. You are residents of Lawrence. We anticipate that we'll have, you know, parents join us, and of course, the staff will all be there. And the way that's designed is that we will have a finalist have opening remarks to the staff. We ask them to keep the entire meeting to 30 minutes. It's also a test of their ability to present in front of a large audience and entertain questions in succinct way and in a way that's respectful and thoughtful and professional. So it's a very timed task, performance task. So you're welcome to come.
And what, and in the search of this new headmaster, you said that you have nothing to do what happens in the high school?
I don't oversee the high school day-to-day operations. I do not.
That would be the headmaster, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think we'll move on to the next presentation, Dave, which is the Restore of Justice. So this is an exciting initiative that we've undertaken. For context sake, last winter, the LTU in partnership with School Leadership went to CSI in New York. That's the Center for School Improvement. And we participated in a three-day institute that gave us really good ideas and vision about implementing restorative justice practices. When we came back from New York, we implemented an action plan that included the rollout of this and started with training for administrators, teachers, parents, and kids, of course. So I'll share with you some of the highlights. So as you know, this is a pretty broad term that encompasses a growing movement to commit building communities in which all the participants feel safe and valued. We really value this because we do things, as we were talking earlier, is that relationships are at the core of students feeling belonging. So restorative approaches seek to balance the needs of victims and wrongdoers in the community through process that preserve the safety and dignity of all in that community. And it's flexible set of practices, so it's not something that is very scripted, although the actual sentiment and core has pretty good structure around that. Our schools are between tier one and tier three training, and so I'll highlight a little bit of that as well. So we think it's helpful with respect to classroom climate and relationship building. Of course, it does help with teaching the curriculum. It helps even when we meet with our families in IEP meetings, problem solving. I'll give you the example of a first grade classroom. So in my daily visits to schools, I visit lots of restorative circles. In this particular school, there was a circle happening, being led by the teacher, and there was a student sitting outside of the circle, if you would. If you can imagine, all the kids are on the rug as first graders. And then there's a student and his teacher by his side. I, I was wondering about that, but in restorative circle, you're allowed to be on a chair, whatever's comfortable for you. So it turns out you, you have a talking piece because that's another way to honor people's voice. And in this circle, the kids were problem solving what they believe was a theft. So the argument between the kids, or the discussion, I should say, was that boy number one had stolen from boy number two from their backpack. The boy in the chair was being accused of this, and he was pretty angsty. He was like, "Ugh." And everyone had a turn to say how this was impacting their class culture because they all believed this was true, except for the boy who was being accused. So then when the talking piece came around, he openly said, "I didn't do this. This is unfair." And so they all had really good conversations about this accusation that was really, they couldn't focus on anything because all they can think about is someone stole from boy number one, no, boy number two, from the backpack. The second example that I wanna give you is at the end of December, the week before the break, I went to a high school circle. And the prompt for the high schoolers was, "Tell us something that you have learned about yourself in 2019," as they were leaving the school year. The, the talking piece in that circle was a duck, which I found it pretty comical. It was this little green duck for high schools. I thought that was really, it's a lot of levity in that. And one of the girls said, "Oh, I'll take it." So you can only talk again when you have the piece. And she said, "You know what I learned about myself is that people take me for granted." And everybody sort of just paused. And two boys over, he took the talking piece. He says, "Girl, that's not right. I feel bad for you." There was a level of empathy and caring for her that was very genuine in that circle. And it, it really warmed my heart because that's, that is the nature of what we're trying to do with kids, that they become their own community. Whether it is in the example of the first grade where there was some breach of trust because they thought there was theft happening and/or a level of empathy where students were caring for each other as they are discovering more about themselves. We have some schools that are practicing restorative discipline that requires tier three training, so we only have two schools at that level. It's a journey and it's a continuum of our schools. I'll just highlight the training that we've done so far, and of course, this is a multi-year initiative. But here, we have, the high school, of course, has had Level One PD. Almost every teacher at the high school has already had Level One training. We have Enlace and RISE that we consider models of restorative justice. As an example, Enlace holds restorative justice circles with families. So the latest example is there was a conflict between two students, and that escalated into a tier three level. And they brought the parents of those two students, and those families also mediated the conflict. So this is what we aspire for all of our schools to be at, but we're not quite there. We also have a district-wide school culture and climate steering committee. They are responsible for the oversight of implementation of restorative justice and for re-dis, I wouldn't say redesign, re-editing our code of conduct book so that it mirrors our practices. I mentioned that this started way last year in June of 2019. I mentioned that this started way last year in June of twenty nineteen in partnership with L T U. And we considered readiness levers for all the schools as they launched into that work. It's why we have schools at level one, tier one, I should say, and then schools in tier three. Did you wanna say something? I saw you pause.
Yes, actually, I wanna ask, so I do wanna say thank you for creating the DuVos Council, you know. I think it's actually something great to see, not only teachers, administrators, parents, and kids. So thank you for that, I really appreciate it, and I wanna invite everybody publicly that our next one will be, it's gonna be March eighteenth, right, at six P M? It's in the S L E? The S L E, so I do welcome everybody to come and see DuVos Council. I really think it's something that you need to experience to understand. But my question also for that is, because you didn't mention something important on it, that it's gonna, it's gonna basically change the conduct book? Which part exactly on it?
Yeah, we're not changing it. So the conduct book is governed by law. So we take statute, and then we translate the practices. So we still have to do discipline that include suspensions, expulsions, like all of that is law. We don't change that. That doesn't, that's a discipline code and a statute. There's three statutes. What we do is, we say, what are the practices that guide that? And then we still implement discipline, so it's a little bit different. And that'll become a public document as soon as it's done. It'll be on our website. I'm happy to bring you a copy as soon as it's done. And you'll see that it's, it's still, it still meets the law, and it's just practices. So in this example, an example can be as like, you know, you have to meet with a student, you have to get their side of the story, you have to meet with the teacher, you have to meet with everyone who was harmed before you can implement discipline. So this is just highlights of what's happening now, and I think I talked a little bit about this, and I even talked about what's happening this weekend, that we still have teachers and administrators that are getting training. This is just the whole gamut of who's been trained so far this fall and what you can expect in the spring. I also had highlighted that there are schools, including in this building, H L C, that are excellent at this practice. And then we have elementary schools and early learning centers who are also really, really good at this. And I also gave you the example of enlace, who now has the parents in restorative circles. Ooh, did I miss that? Was that, I wanted to show him the video also, is it queued up? Okay, sorry about that, bummer. One last example that I'll give you is on this issue of, this does not substitute discipline. I have, the latest example was last week in one of our elementary schools, a fifth grader, fourth graders, excuse me, no, fifth grader. So the boy is out at recess, and he is accidentally pushed. He takes out a pencil from his jacket and stabs the boy that accidentally pushed him in the forehead. It required an emergency room visit, not serious enough that the boy was, you know, whatever, but you know, it required medical attention. In this case, that student who harmed the other one with the pencil was suspended for, you know, we enacted the code of discipline. And while he was out of the community in suspension, the fifth graders had restorative circles, because they were feeling quite jarred by such an aggressive, you know, incident in the playground. They had every grade, every fifth grade had a circle, and then the entire fifth grade rallied around. How do we support this student who's gonna come back to our community, and what message do we wanna send him? So when he returned to the community, they talked about it pretty openly. You know, what you did was really scary, really hurtful. Here's what we expect of you. And he was able to do a big reflection with his fifth graders and his teachers, and they came to an understanding about what's not acceptable. So it was both, it was both, he had discipline, but he was also able to restore the harm he had done to his fifth grade class.
I have a question. Did we, is the life program still in the chats? I don't see a mention in some of these, so like, I have that question.
We are inclusive in the high school, and so that got dismantled with our commitment to inclusion. So students with many disabilities are included at the high school. We don't call it life anymore, we don't call it separate programming. We are inclusive at the high school.
So they, they take, they partake in part of the academies now, nine, ten?
Correct. Whatever grade they are, whatever disability you are, you're part of the community.
Okay, thank you.
Using the restorative justice circle really brings staff members and students closer together. So often, teachers are busy and have big classes, and you don't wanna think of students as just a name on the top of a paper, and you don't wanna just think of students as, this is a B student, or this is a C student, or I need to get on the student's case about, you know, improving their grammar and punctuation, but really learning about a student's life as a human being and not just a student.
So then, as I say, I'm honored five years old. Like, I don't know, like, I was slapping hard last year, and me slapping, like, that was upsetting her. So like, me doing good and having good grades and hopefully graduating and shit, like, that's gonna make her proud.
My favorite part about senior year, I transferred out of the L H S campus over here, so it was like, kinda rough at first, but then getting to know the school and the people and all the help that I'm getting, I got honor on my first term, and I'm trying to keep it up for the whole school year.
It's nice, it's just nice for them to, to express themselves when they feel like they're not being disciplined for anything, and they're actually being listened to. And it can also then help the administration and help the teachers, like, understand their students, where their students are coming from, and try to create a better situation moving forward.
It's a good way for you to connect with the people in your classroom, to start understanding what their thoughts are.
What I like mostly of the circles is it shows us how everybody feels. Everybody feels differently. So it, like, it tells me, how about, he's angry, I'm not gonna be, like, so fun with him.
When you make those connections, it's, I think, the most important thing about this, this circle practice is that we're trying to kind of bridge this whole faculty and student relationship and create more of a community and a human environment where we all see each other as people and not necessarily like stuck in these roles of like, you know, superior or inferior, or pupil and faculty type role. So it's been really exciting this year to be a part of that, and last year as well. It's been really exciting to be a part of that, and I think our, our school community has improved a lot since we started.
If you go wanna queue up the O P S presentation, any additional questions on restorative justice? And as Jonathan had mentioned, we are doing it with families as well. And one place that you'll see that is at DuVos. We've done two trainings, we have many more to do, but there's continuing trainings with all stakeholders in our, in our school system.
Thank you, I do have, I do have one question. I'm wondering how we will know these practices are successful? And I'm wondering if you could share a little bit about the benchmarks, metrics, or any goals that we might be striving for, perhaps initially or maybe after it's launched to all schools, if it will be launched to all schools?
Yep, so this is year one, and the measure for us is continuing to ensure that all schools get the training. We anticipate to get there by year three. In terms of actual benchmarks, we are hopeful that our suspension and disciplinary referrals are reduced. But more importantly, what we care about is that our students are feeling connected to their teachers and their school. That's really what we want. So how do we do that? We're gonna ask kids. We're simply gonna ask kids. We're gonna survey them, we're gonna survey their families, and we're gonna survey their teachers. And we'll design questions that get to the root of belonging and connectedness.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is great, I love this. I'm really interested in all this. My... How do I state this? Are there, it seems like, I don't know, in L P S specifically, but just like, in the world, we do things like in a reactionary nature, and we come up with things, good ideas after, I think this is a great idea. Is there anything like this that's, like, are there circles being held before, like, say, an altercation happens or an incident happens that creates, helps to create that culture before something happens, you know?
Yeah, that's exactly the nature of circles. In fact, you can't hold circles until you've, you can't have the two examples that I gave you with the first grade theft and/or the pencil recess story. They've been practicing the circles for a long time. These are very recent stories. You can't hold discussions that you're not comfortable with unless you've built the connection first in circle. So circles at the very beginning are questions like getting to know you questions. That's how it's designed, and then it progresses to like, what's the problem in class today? As an example, like, for a first grader. But it's really tailored and very scaffolded, but it's more about community building in the beginning, and that's the tier one. And we're still in tier one for many of our schools.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. So next, I wanna share with you the Oliver Partnership Building Project. This is a project that is running parallel to our other project, which is the Leahy. The materials that you have in front of you are pretty dense. We chose to give you all of the information, and tonight I'm going to be summarizing and giving you an update, because right before this meeting, there was a building meeting that is part of this presentation. So what I'd like you to know is that the process started with a community visioning workshop, and that was held at the schools and other various sites to get input from stakeholders as to what they wanted to see in their school. And by that is not just the physical space, but also the feel, the curriculum, the experiences that they wanted their families and kids to have. There was community outreach to include, of course, online and surveys. And we did various groups where we were able to do some more outreach and share with the community, here's what's happening. The educational plan came together based on all those meetings. And what we learned is that the community wants grade-level classrooms that feel like neighborhoods. We want to strengthen and give identity to the elementary and the middle school programs. Of course, we want school safety, that's always important to us. Appropriate spaces for specialized services, and it's a secure community so that the school then becomes an after our community space. I'll highlight what's happening in this slide here. Based on those, here's what we want, what the design team does is given the space awarded by M S B A says, okay, here's how you envision it, here's the, how many spaces you're going to need. So this is not what the school is gonna look like, but rather, here is the space plan. Then what happens is, based on that, we come with a long and short list of options to enact that educational plan. These are the seven long list options, but I'll share with you that that was winnowed down. And so that goal was being able to maximize a thousand seats and being able to fulfill the educational plan, to avoid swing space, to be parallel to the Leahy. And the other factor in this project is making sure that the building that we designed was in line with the city of Lawrence. So this is a, I think this is a beautiful picture of the Commons and the school way, way back then, so we put it in there because we liked it. So here's the current location of the school, you're familiar with that, O P S, this building, the Champs-Elyons Commons, and then Saint Mary's Schools, which can potentially, I'm just gonna hide it right here, become swing space. So all of that matters to us, because as we design this project, we have to be sensitive to all the variables. This is the conceptual planning for the Oliver site, and this is where it lives right now. So that's familiar to you. Here's what it would look like if we added some stories. Now, the challenge here is that this idea, excuse me, let me go back here, would move this building into seven stories, which is not appropriate for the city and/or for students that are K to eight. But still, we have to submit it to the M S B A as an idea. The option four is the renovation addition of the current site. The current site would not fulfill the educational plan, it would require swing space, but it is the option that is the most obvious, because you do have to entertain what if you just renovated and/or demolished and added a new building to the current site? For those considerations, as I mentioned, you have to think about, does this fulfill the program, the educational program? Do you require swing space? Is a demolition acceptable? So we go through all this list. This is the building committee that sort of goes through this list. Then we also have to think about additional sites. Have they been considered in order to satisfy the educational plan? So I'll walk you to the ones that were considered, and there were questions in the community of like, can you consider swapping the school to the O'Neill Park? The answer is, we can't, because it's green space. So it's allowable if we said, oh, we can find green space in the same side of the city, and then we can swap the school there. But as you know, Lawrence is pretty dense, and it's a city, we couldn't find additional green space to swap it. Because that, that came up in a lot of community forums, why don't you just like, build it right in the O'Neill, like, that's green space and green space matters? We would have to go through years of like negotiating that, and it probably, they probably say no. We also, there was, they also asked, what about other sites? Again, to fulfill a thousand seats, that is really challenging in our city. So we took a list and map of city-owned other sites, and those were not able to be fulfilled by the educational plan. So this is just all of our due diligence to figure out where is the best space for this school. Option five is at the stone mill. If you recognize this building, it's right over there by the smokestack, and that's a place where you could fulfill the educational plan. There's some additional considerations for this particular option, but it's one option. The stone mill also has a half-mile radius to the current school, which would support the increase in thousand seats and also walkability to that site, to students. When we did projections, we found that there was like ten students out of that radius, but there's also new construction of homes and apartments over there, so that would be students that we capture in this site as well. This is another view of the stone mill and the impressions of it. I'll get to the part where the stone mill idea is interesting, because the advantages of this idea is that it fulfills the ed plan, you don't need a swing space, the kids will stay in their current school in the meantime. Some of the challenges is that we need an acquisition, it does not belong to the city. The other thing is that we have mitigation and permitting challenges, and then there's a historic building renovation cost and scope. The other thing, this orange piece that you see here is, we would have to add space to build a cafeteria. Because even in this space, we cannot add, we don't have room for a gymnasium or a cafeteria. So that would be something that we have to add to this option. And this is the analysis of that. Here's option seven, which was also considered by the building committee, which is actually just building a new school, right over there by the site that you see the stone mill. And this is potentially the space that we would use for that. And the gateway parking site considerations are here as well. They do have other considerations in terms of the actual space and ground, in terms of building, that's a little more complicated. Most people might say it's just easier to start from scratch, it actually isn't as easier, and it's pretty costly also. So those are considerations that the building committee had to have. And then, of course, we have to do analysis of the transportation, of traffic and parking. All of these things are under consideration as well by the building committee. So I wanted to share with you the timeline up to today. Today, the building committee met, they have made a recommendation about what site to move forward, that is the stone mill. It now goes into consideration by the L A E, then we bring it to the M S B A, and there's a whole slew of work that still has to happen. That does not mean that this is going to be the end site. It is just- That does not mean that this is going to be the end site. It is just the recommendation based on the educational plan. And what the building school committee with the design team and architect have done in terms of due diligence. So, um, I brought you up to speed up to this now, and that's been a couple of years worth of work. People are pretty excited about this project. When the Leahy one comes on board, I will share with you where we are with respect to that process. Our role, as I see it, as educators and instructional leaders is to think about vision forward also. So what does the city need in terms of educational space in five years and 10 years? And to capture those seats that M S B A has allowed us. But also we have to be responsible in terms of what's actually doable with city costs. So it's both.
There's something like 500 something students coming every year, something like that, right?
Well, we have projections. What the M S B A does is they do a history of all of our students for the past, I don't know how many years. And then they project out based on census in that data. And they said, yeah, you're gonna need more seats in 10 years. So they allowed us for five additional hundred seats in this project and 500, five additional for the Leahy. That's a lot of seats. That's a thousand seats. Our city keeps growing is, is the good news. We don't have the problem that other cities do that are declining enrollment. We actually are growing in enrollment.
Could we build down?
I feel like if you can elaborate a little bit, I know you are the part of education and making the focus. But as, you know, how are we, the cost, right? I just wanna elaborate a little bit. I know you did tell me the part that we, the education and the superintendent office takes on this mission. But how are we gonna get it? Cause many slides cost, there's cost here, the cost there. How are we gonna get that?
It's a great question. I think this belongs to, um, your city councils, the elected officials and the mayor, of course, to sort of help us figure that out. It's, it's a costly project. I think that this is an opportunity for us to sort of say, yeah, we care about education. And here's where we're gonna invest resources, right? So I think that the measure and test of, uh, cities and communities, like if you care, if you say you care about something, invest resources. I'm not saying that's easy. I'm not saying that every single dollar that the city owns should go into like new buildings. But I think it should be strongly considered. And as you and I had discussed and I've said in public, my role is to be an advocate for additional seats. And a proper educational plan for our students, our families and our staff.
This is a lot. This was a lot.
It's a lot.
For, I had no idea that this was happening.
It's a huge project. I will be updating you as we go along in this project. And then when the Leahy project, um, turns up a little bit. We have the principal of the Leahy sitting in the audience today, Ethel Cruz. She's very involved in that project. Um, you know, we can talk about that as soon as that kind of cranks up, but this one is the one that's really ramped up right now. We started with a kickoff at the Leahy project last week, last week. Or this week, I've lost track. Last week, last week, thank you. So they're running parallel right now, but this one is the one that's been ramped up right now.
I do have one question. So when we, when this project is developed.
Yeah.
And we, we had to talk about other type of education systems that are in our community. And we see if the potential of students coming from those schools into our schools. Because, you know, we're presenting something more, let's call it beautiful. Are we gonna be able to, um, contain and be able to support all those kids coming? Adding all these seats, where's the cap? Thousand will be the cap?
Um, I don't think so. I think that the number is based on census data and the trends that we have in enrollment. It's not a guarantee that we're only gonna have the additional 500 in that zone or part of the city or at the Leahy. But there's movement also across the city, right? So we're anticipating we're gonna need it. The M S B A agrees with us. Um, and we're not gonna overfill our school. We try not to. We're sensitive because we wanna keep class size that's reasonable also. So I don't have the answer to that, but we do have to be responsible to project out if we have numbers right now that tell us we're gonna need the seats.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for coming out today and presenting us this. Go ahead.
Thank you. Excuse me. I do, um, I would like to present a motion to our school committee today to increase. Our, um, Lawrence School Committee meetings to a monthly frequency.
Any motion? Does anybody second that?
I, I just have a question as to. We, we need our chair, our vice chair to like see if we could do that. Uh, I, I would be in favor of it, but I, I just don't wanna get in trouble.
I thought we were able to set forward mo- um, motions when we had quorum.
I would love to see when we have the full quorum.
Okay.
I mean, like we could, I know we need to. Yeah, do we do that here then? I guess that's, that's just.
That's an appoint, uh, unfortunately. Is, I'm not the appointed chair. I'm just appointed for today. So we don't have a chair to make that motion.
We don't have like council present or something?
No. Thank you.
Can we make that a thing?
Thank you. Uh, well, thank you so much, everybody, for coming out and being involved and sharing, um. The ideas and the expectations and where we going forward. So thank you, Ms. Paris. Um, any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn and congratulation on you running the meeting.
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.